Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator/Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong, solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator/Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County: It's Life Well Run.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Let's get started.
Good morning.
We are starting our Legislative and Human Resources Committee for June 12, 2018. Do we have any public comment today? All right. Seeing none, we move on to Item 2, Approval of the Minutes. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Cornix. Support by Commissioner Steck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Our medical examiner seems to be delayed a little bit, so we are going to skip down to Item 4, if that's okay with everyone, and do the performance measurement review of the Bureau of Equalization.
Morning, Commissioners. How are you today?
Good morning.
It's my pleasure to be presenting an overview of our performance measurements for equalization. I'm going to give a PowerPoint presentation, go through some of our -- how we are aligned with the board priorities, give you an overview of our key goals and metrics, talk about several of our collaborations that we have through the Equalization Department, talk a little bit about how we're employing technology and putting technology in action, and then talk a little bit about the look ahead. So in terms of priority alignments with the board goals, we are aligned with stable revenues, safe community, proactive and innovative government, and high quality of life. And we'll go through and we'll tie in a little bit several of the features as we go along. But those are the things that we are -- we find ourselves in alignment with, with the board goals. Our mission statement is to provide for a fair system of property assessment and taxation, and to provide professional mapping services for all the cities and townships in Kent County, and by extension to all the citizens of Kent County. We meet our objectives, our main objectives as a department through three main areas. One, we annually project the property values, and we study the overall level of assessment because, as you know, Michigan's assessment system is based on 50% of true cash value is set at the assessed value or the equalized value. And we accomplish that through two main areas. We do that by conducting statistical assessment to sales ratio studies, and we also do that through appraisal studies, where the professional opinions of our staff appraisers act in the stead of an actual sale price. And we, in our opinions, take the weight of a sale for those classes of properties where we don't have sufficient data to do an actual sale study, and then we do a reconciliation with the assessors. And we do all this in order to comply with state law. And obviously, since the property taxes are primary source of funding and much of local government, this is a key part of having stable revenues throughout the organization. The other main -- one of the other main things we do is we do provide those professional tax mapping services. And had several discussions about this in terms of getting to the why, but I've often referred to -- Kent County is about a quarter million pieces of real property, and it's our job to make sure that, if that was a jigsaw puzzle, that all the puzzle pieces have a place and there's no gaps and no overlaps. So what we do is we make sure that all land that is subject to the property tax is taxed, but it's only taxed once and it's not subject to that double taxation. So our property description mapping staff is very professional, and they do a really good job of making sure that all of those boundaries are integrated and synced up. Again, and that's a key part of having stable revenues. You cannot take good maps for granted, and having good maps really just keeps the integrity of the underlying system intact. Associated with that, then, of course, is that the preservation of the public land survey system. Kent County, as many of you know, has been on the forefront of remonumentation administration. The state really, in fact, modeled its program off of the success of the Kent County program in the '80s and '90s. And you're never more than a half mile away from a government monument in Kent County. And that contributes to a higher quality of life. Good fences make good neighbors. And the integrity of our system is second to none in the state of Michigan. So how we go about accomplishing those things is going to be the focus of the next several slides. I always like to call attention that the Board of Commissioners is responsible for two very important sides of the equation in the property tax discussion. The first part is the annual equalization report. And this is the report that the Equalization Department accomplishes for the Board of Commissioners on an annual basis, where we summarize and tabulate all of the values in their various forms, from assessed values to taxable values, et cetera, to make sure that all of the valuation is being handled in a fair and equitable manner under the provisions of the Property Tax Act. The second required report of the board is the annual apportionment report, and those will be coming to you in October of each year. And the apportionment report is the part that makes sure that all of the taxing authorities in Kent County, including the county, comply with the provisions of the Headley Amendment and the maximum millage limitations. So the Board of Commissioners is responsible on an annual basis to make sure that all the values are fair and that all of the millages are legal. And of course, the value times the millage is what is the basis of the property tax system that we all operate under. As I mentioned before, we accomplish our goals of achieving the equalization side of a fair and equitable valuation equation through the use of our appraisal studies, sales studies, and also our assessment role auditing. So on an annual basis, through our appraisal studies and sales studies, we send out to the assessors the projected change in true cash value. Now, most of the time historically, that is a gradual rise in value. However, as we just emerged from the Great Recession, we know that that goes both ways. So we don't measure the rise in taxes, we measure the change in values. And we tell the assessors accordingly how they need to raise or lower their level of assessment in order to follow the market that we measure. And so when those assessment roles come back to us after they've concluded their work and they've made their adjustments, we go through and we annually audit all of those roles to make sure that they're in compliance. And should they not be in compliance, really, the sole power of law, really, that I have as Equalization Director, acting on behalf of the board, is to impose an equalization factor, thereby equalizing the property assessment roles, to make sure that any unit that doesn't meet the statutory requirements of 50%, we can then impose that on them. And so the auditing role, the assessment role auditing process is a very important function. It's where the county acts as the checks and balances on the local unit. And that's something that we perform on an annual basis. Through our property description mapping division, we do provide that professional mapping services. We also keep track of all of the real property inventory that we publish on an annual basis that keeps track of all of the properties that the county possesses. We also integrate tightly with 911 and their addressing. So we do work with them, and they, we supply them with updated property address changes and the like. And so through our PDM, we're tied to that safety measure with the board alignments through the 911 mechanism. And I also mentioned a little bit about the remonumentation. So let's talk a little bit about the equalization in terms of the performance measures themselves. Our job is to ensure that that level of assessment for all of the property classes is set at the 50% of the true cash value. We do this by conducting 2,000 appraisals in the agricultural, commercial, and industrial properties each year. And we also go out and go on all of the property sales that occur in the commercial and industrial as well. So because there's not, because in the residential class, we have between 25,000 and 30,000 transactions each year, we have plenty of statistical data that we can draw inferences from. But because in the commercial and industrial sectors, we don't usually have a large enough sample size, that is what necessitates the need for us to go out and do appraisals that act to supplement whatever sales information that we have. So we go out on all of the sales for the commercial and industrial, and then agricultural, and then we also supplement that with our own appraisals. So we do that. We also, and although personal property is being phased out, we do perform 200 audits a year on personal property accounts. That, in a computerized age, we find that the auditing part is probably 50% education, 50% compliance, because most of the people that we do audit are simply not fully informed, especially if they're smaller businesses, et cetera, et cetera, or accountants that are not necessarily up to speed on all of the changes with Michigan. So while the personal property is being phased out, it is not being eliminated altogether. The personal property program is an exemption. It is not an elimination, it is an exemption. So very much like we still have to have an assessed value, taxable value does not negate the need for an assessed value, the personal property exemption program is just that, it's an exemption. It doesn't take away the underlying administration of the personal property tax. So, and I also referred to that on an annual basis, we do audit the assessment roles for all 30 of our cities and townships that perform assessing here in Kent County. So the measures for these thing, measurements, are indicated here. As you can see, and if you look in the last column, we, on an annual basis, without fail, we do make sure that the 50% level of assessment is met. Last year, our actual number of appraisals, if you look in the 2017 column, was 2,570. We do plan 2,000 for this year. We've gone out on all of the commercial industrial sales, and we're essentially right on target with our annual plan for personal property audits within the department. And each year, sometimes, in this assessment role audit column, sometimes that number might dip down to 28 or 29. Every once in a while, I'll have an assessor that gets behind in their processing, and they don't send the role to us in time for us to audit it. And therefore, they have to live with a post-March border review audit. And then it's, you know, we can't really do any preventative maintenance at that point if they have not met their objectives and given us an opportunity to audit the role before. That's not always at 30. But for the last three years, we've had all of the units coming in and complying with the audit program, so that's 30 there in that column. Last year, we went out on 433 commercial and industrial sales as they came in. We processed 29,672 deeds from the Register of Deeds. Last year, we did have to apply some equalization factors due to a clerical error on an assessor's part. That is atypical, and we don't anticipate that this year. What happened, what ended up happening was one of the assessors put their, instead of putting their starting ratios in at the beginning of the process, they put their ending ratios in, which was almost at 50%, right? Between 49 and 50. So we had to go ahead and correct that through the power of the equalization factor. But that is unusual, and that was a new assessor, and so I don't anticipate that happening again in 2018. I think that situation's been corrected. We have overall 137 property classes, so if you think of your individual township, there's probably a mix of agricultural, commercial, industrial, residential property, as well as the personal property classes. So between our 30 government units, there's 130 separate distinct equalization studies that we have to perform for each individual class, because in Michigan, we equalize by classification of property, not by the overall government unit. On an annual basis, we've trended anywhere between 450 and 600 overall appraisals. Last year, we exceeded our goal by quite a bit in terms of the number of appraisals. In order for us to have a valid statistical sampling of the market, we benchmarked that at around 480 right now is what we do. We always say, we plan the work and then we work the plan. We're never upset when our appraisers deliver more than what the minimum is expected. And so that's why we oftentimes will exceed that real property appraisals per appraiser. And then our plan for our audits are right around 200 a year, and so those are consistent over the last several years. In property description and mapping, when property is sold, or when a property, let's say there's a citizen who wants to split up a 40-acre tract of land into three smaller parcels, that initiates a process. It's not an instantaneous process. It takes some time to develop. Has to go through local approval. It has to be recorded at the Register of Deeds. It has to be officially entered in on the tax roll in the next tax cycle. But the internal processes leading up to that, we set a measurement several years ago that we want to be processing all of the applications that we receive from the local units within 30 days. So we set a target of processing 95% of the applications within 30 days of coming into our office. And we've met that consistently over time. If you look at the bottom indicators there, as we, as we begin now, a real uptick at the very height, like in the 2007 era, we were, we were averaging between 7,500 and 9,000 property descriptions of new parcels each year. That dipped down considerably to about half of what it normally has been historically. And we're seeing the uptrend now in the development as the economy continues to flourish and its development begins its resurgence. So last year, in 2017, we had only projected 4,500 property description changes. We actually did 6,400, just shy of 6,500. We're expecting that number to increase this year, so we projected 7,000 for the current 2018 cycle. Remonumentation, as I said, you're never more than a half mile away from a Kent County government monument. When I was sharing this presentation with my staff, they said, can you do something about that top picture? It kind of looks like a scab. I said, well, it's meant to show the monument face, so I don't know if you can see it on your monitors clearly or the audience, but it says Kent County Monument on the, on the top one there. But the photo, or the graphic below shows a depiction of what these monuments actually look like. They're four-foot iron monuments, and they're set every half mile in Kent County, including centers of sections. Our goal is to establish, is to reestablish these each year. We've got over 4,000 of these in the ground in Kent County. There's no new locations that we have, so we are in what the state would call a maintenance mode. And so we receive grant funding for this program, and the grant fully funds the remonumentation program through enterprise fund type of mechanism. And so our goal is to do these each year. Last year, we expected to do 300. Through some delays and also some changes and some construction plans, that number wasn't as high as it was projected to be. This year, our plan of work that we submitted to the state projects that we'll repair, replace 254 monuments. These are primarily along construction routes or areas where we know that there's been some sort of change. I want to highlight a little bit, because this is really important, I think, in terms of collaboration. Equalization has been fortunate to be able to participate in a few intergovernmental collaborations over the years. But I also think what is really a larger story is that with an organization as large as ours, there is everyday collaboration that happens between and amongst all of the departments. That is really quite remarkable in terms of how, how we all work sort of in a synergistic way to accomplish our goals. Each department fulfilling its own responsibilities while contributing to the larger overall effectiveness of Kent County as an organization. I highlight just a few of these because, literally, on a daily basis, our office interfaces with, a very important interface with us is through the IT, through the GIS team, of course, the Administrator's Office, the sheriff, I've mentioned the 911. We also work with them through the damage assessment. Fiscal services, the county clerk, the county treasurer, and we're also, the drain commissioner is dependent on what we do, and we also work very tightly with the road commission, which is not a county department, but is closely affiliated with us. And we work very closely with them on address assignment. So our business process is dependent and codependent on these, these other departments. And so I just want to thank them and thank you all for supporting the overall operation. We also, of course, work very closely with our local governments, 21 townships, nine cities. Daily, we are in an interactive process where, particularly on the property description and mapping side, as new parcels are created, we work very tightly with them. Now, I've also mentioned the 911 dispatch. We also, of course, collaborate through Alleghen County in an intergovernmental agreement with Alleghen County for the Equalization Director Services. And myself and Brenda Ritchie, the other Kent County deputy, work with Steve Rickers and as the deputy down there in Alleghen County. And we're sort of as a three-person management team to help coordinate the activities of both of those staffs. And that is an intergovernmental collaboration that we're working with. We have a three-year agreement with Alleghen County right now. I've talked extensively with Wayman. We're going to be going through the process of sort of reevaluating that. As you recall, we previously worked with Moncom County as Equalization Director Services up there. And now that we're back to just the two counties, we're going to be finalizing things through the budget process in order to clarify and solidify exactly what the ongoing nature of that relationship's going to be going forward. Another thing that I would be remiss is, you know, one of the things, if you're, if you've ever had an opportunity to come into our department, our department really prides itself on its excellent customer service. Each year, we have over 6,000 direct customer interactions through the public counter or the telephones. And that doesn't really even include the website interactions that we have through Access Kent, which generate a lot of phone calls itself. Every day, we serve title companies, surveying firms, engineering firms, realtors, developers, environmental companies, and really any industry that's associated with the transaction of real estate. And we have a really excellent staff, and we provide a very high level of customer service on a daily basis. We also work very closely with our neighbor next door, the city of Grand Rapids, with split services and survey. We have agreements with the Grand Rapids Association of Realtors for the exchange of information, where they receive annual updates of our property building characteristics. This helps the multiple listing service easily update their information. We also do the PDR monitoring program, which goes out and looks at all of the properties that, where the county has purchased development rights. And so we have to monitor those farms to make sure that those are compliant. And we do that through our PD&amp;M division. Ongoing collaborations include regional GIS system, the Regis system through Grand Valley Metro Health Council. We also have data sharing agreements with Grand Valley State University. We're participating in the state of Michigan parcel repository, and we've also been instrumental in helping to pass CAMA and GIS guidelines and standards for use, for use by assessors throughout the state. We, we also do ortho flights on a periodic basis in partnership with the state of Michigan. And we've, in the past, we've organized multi-county oblique aerials. We do have an aerial flight that just concluded in 2018. This is one of those examples where collaboration is good, but it can also be too good sometimes. What we found is that by organizing the multi-county flight with our four neighboring counties is all we really did was sort of take away prime flight time from Kent County. So we don't collaborate with the other counties anymore. We set our own schedule so that we're always at the front of the line. And so we're trying to coordinate where you go to your contract this year, we'll do it this year, so that we don't have to compete for those very few days in April and May where the weather can be kind of a, a little bit of a game of roulette. So we want to make sure that when we are under contract, that we, we're at the front of the line with those. So we don't really have multi-county flights in the past. It's just an example of one of those things where we ventured out and tried something, and then we learned from it, and, and we're sort of scaling back. We also have had, for the last three years, we've had Calvin College interns come into the department, and that's another area of collaboration. One that I was particularly pleased with, that I would like to call your guys' attention to, was in the flood this past February, the Department of Public Works has procured drones for use over their waste facilities. And we took advantage of that. We collaborated with them. If you look, the photo on the right is an indicator of the, of the team, and that's a, that's a picture from the drone, sort of going back down on the team. Phil Wall, Steve Smith from our department, who were responsible for the damage assessment partner, with Ron Mills and Paul Smith from the DPW. And then if you look to the photo on the left, it's, that's the picture of the same crew, except this time, if you look, focus in on the red pickup there, you'll see the people standing there by the pickup. That's the same vantage point, except using the drone. One of the interesting things about this flood is you can actually see the snow cap there still with the ice, the, the snow piles from the snowplows in the parking lot. So it was a really weird conflagration of weather and, and rain and floods that happened that time. The advantage of this, of course, for using drones for damage assessment is that we can get to the high watermark without having to rely on a state police helicopter. We can go up and very quickly assess the extent of the damage. And that was, that was a new collaboration this year that I wanted to thank especially the DPW for doing that. I said I'd talk a little bit about technology in action. And so technology is one of those things where properly employed technology can be a really good force for efficiency. properly-employed technology can be a really good force for efficiency. Not properly-employed, it can, it can, it can be something where you've spent quite a bit of time and you haven't really gotten sort of a bang for the buck. I always use the example of damage assessment. The best technology for damage assessment, still to this day, is a pencil and paper. A, a team going out and doing damage assessment, they're not, they don't need to rely on things shutting down. They, they can, they can take photos and then they can gather things on pencil and paper. Now, we happen to take that information that they gather on that pencil and paper and we come back and we put it into the technology that we have. And mobile computing is one of those things where it is evolving. And it is something that, because I have a staff of appraisers who are always out in the field, we are, we are searching for that optimal mobile solution that will give them connectivity back here to the county with reliable connection and secure connections and be able to use the software. So, for the past several years, we've been working on, on the technology and finding things that work that maintain the simplicity as close as we can to that pencil and paper mode. So, a few of those examples are, we have Microsoft Surfaces for our appraisers. And we're working with those to give them remote connections back into the office. We also work, we also created a damage assessment module, referring back to that damage assessment, where, working with our GIS team, we were able to transition from that pencil and paper, especially in this last flood. It was really, really evident how we were able to do that. Through the Data Collector App, our Elliot Lowe and our GIS team created an instance in Parcel Data Collector where we were able to go out and with our phones and tablets, we're able to gather that information in real-time. And we're, we're working, we're always working in this area, I guess, to make the technology more efficient and, and better for, for the department. This, the way that this kind of pulled all together, and this is not from the most recent flood, but it's from the tornado that hit us on July 6th, 2014. Using an instance again of Data Collector and then also the Damage Assessment Module that we have in our CAMA system, you can see the, the tornado path and the map and all of this came together. And this was done through a collaboration with our GIS team and the Damage Assessment Team. Sort of a look ahead, I do believe that within the, the, the software systems that we work with, I believe that there's going to be a trend more towards cloud computing. I think that mobility desire is, is a big driver of that. There are, we, we will see collaborations that make sense, that allow the county and the locals working in partnership to achieve economies of scale. Mobility, I believe, is going to increasingly be central as we search for fieldwork solutions. And, and if we are able to, to make that seamless, we can, we, that can change some of our work processes. Maybe even have us work more directly with local units, et cetera, going forward. So, that is a overview of the various things that we do. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have, and I thank you for your time today.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Commissioner Bonk.
Yes, some of the first work I was a part of for the newer commissioners was that remonumentation. I think I worked with you some 16 years or 18 years ago on that initial work.
Yes.
And replacing all those monuments. And some of those monuments were wagon wheels and bricks and ax handles and whatnot. Maybe you could speak to that a little bit. And then, my second question is, is that remonumentation, are those monuments all on GPS?
Well, to the, to the first part, I guess I'm remiss. We do have a wagon wheel down, or we do have an axle down in the storage bin. I normally try to bring that up here. But yeah, with respect to the remonumentation, old fence posts, old iron, we've got an iron from Lowell that's got branded 1869 on it. The process that the county went through some 30, 40 years ago now and continues to this day is to replace all of those older monuments with the, the four-inch monuments. All of our corners are GPS. Our Centers of Sections are not necessarily officially GPSed in the state system, but we do have coordinate points on all of them. So, that, that's an aid to the surveying community to, to find them. In the surveying world, there's a difference in terms of what you can just collect data on and what you can certify as to being a certain amount of, of ground control order. And so, all of our official government corners are certified to the highest level of accuracy. And that's what surveyors will tie into when they're developing a new plat, et cetera. The Centers of Sections and the half-mile markers, I'm pretty certain that they have points on all of those. I don't want to, I don't want to misspeak, but I can follow up with you to make sure that we have data on all of those. But those will not be certified to the same level of order that the, that the actual mile marker posts would be. So, it's very easy to find monuments in Kent County as a result of the, the work that's been done over the years.
Real quick question. Where's a major monument? Was it Southern Michigan or Indiana, the major monument for the area?
Yeah, so there's, it's, it's first order, second owner, and third control. And, and there's, there's one out, I believe, at the airport. I'm looking at you because of your surveying background and...
That goes back though. I might have forgot. I thought this went downtown.
There's one at the airport. I think we have three really high-level monuments here in Kent County. And one's sort of in the Rockford area, one's in the southwest area, and then there's one over at the airport. And then, the highest level order is somewhere south and west of here. I don't know exactly where it is. But that would be like a first-order monument that is, you know, encased in, very large and encased and guarded and stuff so that it's protected. And then, it goes down in, in order of magnitude from there. But we have three monuments that are at the next level of, of accuracy. And every, every other point in Kent County is referenced to one of those three markers here in Kent.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Corndike.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Matt, thank you for all your hard work. I know you, a lot of work with you and your staff over, every year. And my question has to do with the numbers on your report. The number of onsite real estate appraisals, you had set the goal at 2,000. And the average of the last three years was like 2250. Are you assuming there's going to be a decline in that need or, or what's the reasoning for that?
No, a lot, that number, what we try to do is we try to set a, a number that is, we know is going to be realistic. And we build in, we build in times for vacation. We, we'll be building times for some potential vacancies. We just had a, we just had a, an appraiser retire, a very experienced appraiser retire.
Okay.
And so, we know that there's going to be some training and some startup with, with that person. What we, in, in, in order for us to gauge the market, what we, what we, what we said is this is the number that we have to have and, and that number is due on November 1st from all of our appraisers. And we've had appraisers that have gone out there and they've exceeded that on an annual basis. But we've never bumped that up as the expectation because there's always a certain amount of appraisals that we will not include in the final study.
What's more of a minimum type of goal then?
It's, no, I would say it's, it's like the median type of goal, where it's not a minimum. It's, that's the number that we have to have in order to have valid studies. And we have some appraisers that will exceed that every year, but then we have other appraisers that will do work on special projects. So, that number fluctuates on a year-to-year basis. And so, it's not the type of thing where, okay, we're consistently exceeding it. I'm going to raise the expectation and now make that the new standard.
Okay.
Because if I do that, then what I do is I crowd out those, we want to do a special study on golf courses or we want to really take a look at hotels this year. There's a lot of special projects that we do that, that we sort of plan on. And we, we, we'd like to be a little bit nimble in terms of what those things are. There might be a big tribunal case or something that we want to help somebody with and we'll pull one of our appraisers to help with something like that. So, we're, we're really comfortable with these numbers. And it's interesting, when, when we look back, when we first developed performance measurements in, in Kent County back, I think, in like 97, we counted everything. We counted every phone call. We counted everything. We, we counted really to the point where it was just a lot of make-work. And we really distilled the essence of what we had into these few critical ones. But we're comfortable with where that's at. We do a pretty realistic assessment every year of where it's going to be.
Have you added appraisers so the workload is a little bit less or more or about the same? Because I look at the other number, the number of appraisals per appraiser. And that's sort of, you know, that number is sort of low based on what you've done in the last three years as well. So, what's that dependent upon?
Could you repeat the, the question again?
So, I look at the next page as number of property appraisals per appraiser. And the average has been about 550 and the expected this year is 480. So, I was wondering, is that the same type of?
It's the, that's exactly the dynamic that I'm talking about.
Okay.
Is 4, 480 is what we need and what we expect from them and, and we, we will get more.
Pretty much outperformed that.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, to, to get to your point, I mean, to, to dialogue on that, we could arguably bump up that expectation and probably be fine. But what I always balance that against is what do I need to do our job and make sure that that's, that's there and what I realistically expect? And it gives me the flexibility that if I have to pull them off of those things, then I've got the time to do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. That's a, thank you. It's a good question. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. So, first, Matt, I got to say that of all the people that appear in front of us, your job is the one I'm most jealous of. I would love to play with that. So, a couple of questions, though. You talked about doing the aerial photography in 18. You did it this year, this spring?
Correct. We actually have a two-flight contract. We, we flew it in 2017 and we rejected the quality. We rejected it based on the amount of leaf on. So, they re-flew it again here in 2018. So, that's technically the first flight of our two contract, our two-flight contract. And so, our next one will be in 2020 on the oblique photography.
I wasn't sure you could find days where there was no snow on the ground and no leaves on the trees, but you found them, huh?
Actually, probably this year, we had probably the most ideal conditions.
Did you really?
Yes.
So, how often do we do that? Do a, do a complete inventory of the county and the aerials?
Yeah. So, historically, going back historically, when we had just the top-down orthos, we did it once every five years. This cycle was the first time we're really moving more to a three-year cycle. Or so, we're, we did a six-year contract with two flights this past go-round for the oblique imagery. And that's what I'm going to recommend that we do. The cost is, is less now and we get, we get more, we get more data points and we also get much higher resolution. And the oblique photography with the measuring tools and everything that it brings along with it is something that I, I, I want us to operationalize and have once every three years.
So, I guess that's what I'm, I'm wondering is what's, what do we gain? What are, what are we accomplishing by doing this every three years? Is it higher resolution? Is it, what makes it worth our, our money to do it again?
Change. Quite simple. As every, as structures are built, it gives us a really clear photographic record of the way that we develop as a region. And it's, it's very empowering for not only the local assessors, but for public safety in terms of 911 dispatch. We, the closer we are to the reality of the situation on the ground today, it just has benefits for anyone who's using the pictometry. You know, selfishly, within the equalization and assessing world, it gives us the ability to measure any structure. And when safety and access are a big component in doing, performing fieldwork. So, an assessor who is dealing with a property owner who doesn't really want them on their property or there's a safety issue or there's dogs or there's access, whatever the case may be, there's, there's, there's access to the entire visual landscape that can be done. Public safety is also a big consumer of oblique imagery because it allows them to have visual intelligence when they're planning operations.
Follow-up, if I could. Do audit all of the assessors in Kent County?
Yes.
On an annual basis?
Correct.
What's the, what's the advantage from a global perspective of having individual city and township assessors and a county-wide audit of that system? Couldn't that be collapsed?
Well, some people would argue that that, that could be the case. Michigan is, you know, we're, is one of 50 states and several states do things with fewer levels. The biggest reason historically, of course, is checks and balances. And as I've pointed out with, through the, through the PMs, we do, we do periodically have to implement the equalization factors. This, there's, in our system, there's the local assessment function, there's the county equalization function, and then there's the state equalization function. If you were to move away from a county equalization, then the state would have to play a much larger role in the process, in much more detail than they do today. And if you were to collapse things at the local units, then you would, you would need to find a balance where the, the local districts or the local assessing units would, would need to find a level that is, is achieving, you know, some efficiencies. Here in Kent County, we have many units that share assessors right now, today. And so, we've got several government units that, I always use sort of Sparta and Tyrone as an example. They have, they, they share an assessor and they've created a scenario where they've got a shared resource there between the two of them.
Couldn't they contract with the county? Do you have the county do that?
Yes. In fact, some of you may be aware that there is a, an assessing reform proposal before the state that is, is sort of recommending some of those changes, using the county sort of as a backstop or the assessing district of, of last resort, if you will. Yeah, I think honest people can agree or disagree on whether or not you could collapse that or expand it. I think, at the end of the day, the, the work is the work. We need to have people visiting properties. We need to have people doing the analysis. And, you know, I believe that there's room for plenty of discussion in terms of, of what that, what that can look like. I always have said to, to our staff, as long as we're the solution to other people's problems, we're probably going to be okay. We've, we've collaborated with our local units doing reappraisals. We've done short-term assessment things for people while they were, while those units were doing certifications. We collectively, you as a board, in the Administrator's Office, we would need to really sort of establish, you know, what sort of view we would want to take on issues such as the current pending reform. But at, at the end of the day, I think that there's, there's potential for fruitful discussions in terms of what's the best way to move forward.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for everything you do. I think there's one department that the average person would say, what do they do? And at the end of the day, I think the equalization, sure, we spend taxpayer money to support your budget and there's fees that are collected, but at the end of the day, you save a lot of people a lot of money with the information that we have available. And I just want to give kind of a shout-out to, everyone says how great our remonumentation program is in Kent County. And a lot of that has to do is the surveyors that we had in town. If you go to another county and surveyed 10, 15 years ago, a lot of the data was never shared. You know, that was like, well, we did the work. We're not going to share it with you. I think in Kent County, a lot of the surveyors, Williams and Wirth, Ryan Newall, had just loads of information, history on why that corner was set, what they, what the evidence was around, and all that was preserved. And they didn't hesitate to share that when we went into the remonumentation program because it wasn't so much to go to a county where you have three corners in dispute as they wanted to have one and they wanted to make sure that it was correct. So, a lot of those older surveyors sit on our remonumentation committee. They're in their late 70s, early 80s. And it's just, I was always in awe to see the amount of work that they did to, to get it right and get it right the first time they took pride in it. Just to you that maybe you start a ride-along program for commissioners. Have them set a remon and maybe pick one in a concrete road that's got clay and gravel underneath it. And then, I think everyone should at least experience that once in their life. it, and then I think everyone should at least experience that once in their life.
All right.
All right. Well, if there are any other questions, thank you, Matt. Appreciate all your work. We are, just a quick note on item three for Dr. Cole. He did send us a message. He's tied up, so we're going to have to reschedule him. So, we will do item three another day. Onto item five, Board of Commissioner appointment of the Kent District Library Board, Region 7. Do I have a motion? Second.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Corndeick, support by Commissioner Coleman. We have a recommendation to approve Ellie Bush. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to appoint Ellie Idema to the, Idema, to the Kent District Library Board for Region 7 to fill a four-year term ending December 31, 2020. A citizen vacancy recently occurred on the Kent District Library Board for Region 7. Vacancy was posted on WWAssexKent.com for several weeks thereafter. An interview team consisting of Commissioners Mandy Bolter, Dan Corndeick, and Jim Talan reviewed applications and is recommending the appointment of Ellie Idema to the Kent District Library Board.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on this? Commissioner Ponsting.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Wayman, I know that there's kind of the unwritten rule that each board member represents two units, and they kind of rotate that back and forth. I know the former one was the grand, and now one is someone from Iron, are both entities happy with the pick?
As far as I know, we were just told to pick someone from the overall region, so that's what we did based on the applications we received. Commissioner Bonk.
My question's been answered about the regional selection.
Yep. All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of appointing Ellie Idema? Her maiden name was Bush. Say aye? Aye? All opposed? All right. We are formally appointing her to the KDL Board. Onto item six, Commissioner Miscellaneous. Do we have any miscellaneous today? Commissioner Ponsting.
I just wanted to tell you, this at Thursday's meeting, I'm not be there. The Michigan Association of County Board of Directors meets that day, so I'll be absent. I appreciate it.
All right. Any other Commissioner Miscellaneous? All right. Seeing none, we are adjourned.
I am Kent County. I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
I'm Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. Oh, yeah.